Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Beautiful day. Oh, I mean, the Lord bless us again. But that is, we all mind the pollen count, right? Yeah, alright. We watched the news this morning. They were talking about it on there and you don't really notice it till you walk out and your vehicle's yellow. Or green or whatever. Anyway, thank y'all all for being here this morning. This is regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, March 12th, 2024. It's about nine oh four AM. Let's see, we call this meeting in order. Records show that Commissioner Whitmire is here, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Grabowski, I believe Commissioner.
Yes.
I don't see him on there yet. I believe Fisher Wilson is having treatment this morning, so he might not be with us. So anyway, if you would, let's all rise. We'll have our play this morning. If you'd lead us in that, share it with us and indication.
Please face the American flag.
A flag of allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the technical flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Pray for me, please. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord. Lord, thank you for the dedication of Judge Knight and the Commissioners, Lord. As they go through this agenda today, Lord, give them the wisdom to do the things that would benefit the people of Liberty County, as they always do, Lord. Lord, be mindful of those that are sick of Angela and Commissioner Wilson. Be with them, comfort them in the way you can. Lord, we've got a couple of groups here this morning from the Red Cross and Tri-County. And Lord, thank you for the dedication they have and the hearts that they have to help others, Lord, and ask a blessing on those groups, Lord. Lord, as we go through this meeting, help us to focus on the things that need to be done. And Lord, thank you for your Son Jesus that died on the cross for our sins. It's his name that we pray. Amen. Thanks, Sheriff. And we do have some proclamations this morning. But I would tell you what, first, our friends of American Red Cross, y'all come up? Yeah. And, uh, Bubba?
It's your day.
I felt awful. That was really hard to say. I was an idiot. Don't say nothing today.
The God selection, Bubba, I fell off a ladder too. Next thing you know, I was county judge.
Lord, amen.
It's, uh, thank y'all for all you do. But every time we have some kind of crisis in the county, whether it's big weather related or anything else, y'all always come right in. And I do appreciate it. And I'm sure the Commissioners and the public and everybody here in Liberty County, thanks y'all so much for your service.
I like to thank you all. And probably everybody in here has disasters, right, Lord? Has been one, seen it happen, you've been at one. And it's so gratifying that the teamwork that the Red Cross has with the county Office of Emergency Management, law enforcement, Bobby Ray, or everybody. It's, it's a team when a disaster happens. We don't bicker, we don't do nothing. We got our roles to play. If we need to help y'all, we come to it.
Yes.
But vice versa.
It is.
And the Commissioners, David Whitmire is one of, he's a friend of mine and he's my Commissioner, so I have to say, whoo, he's good at it.
Yeah. He is. It's always there.
I'll pay for that later, won't I?
Yeah.
But I just want to thank y'all.
Yes.
I appreciate you. I really do appreciate you.
Thank you. You bet.
Appreciate you both.
The American Red Cross Month for 2024, whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Liberty County, Texas, and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is a part of our community and exemplified by the people of Liberty County, Texas. Through simple acts of kindness, the Red Cross provides help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Claire Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate the human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend their best hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters. Donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease or other life-threatening conditions. Supporting military members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service. Using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of those who fulfill Claire Barton's no words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. Think about that. And ask everyone to join this commitment. Now therefore, I, J. Knight of Liberty. By virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Liberty County and Texas, we hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Liberty County to reach out and support humanitarian mission. It was, uh, I had to fix the seal and sign this, this congratulation. Thank y'all so much.
Y'all so much.
This is for you. Thank you, sir. You bet.
I think we have photo of our county.
Probably, yeah. Because you think you get the word, you know, we're not, I'm not gonna help you.
I've known her a long time. This is my first.
What, 30 years?
Eighty dog years.
You guys are actually faceless now.
You're gonna blur my face in the daylight.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Foster with IDD Provider Services. Kathy, don't come all up. All the, all the folks that, uh, you all know. Uh, and the staff, Dr. Kathy, y'all, what is on up here? Y'all visit with me in a minute. Or maybe longer than a minute. How you doing? Good? Good. Alright. Chad, man. Hey, I'm gonna slide over so we can get everybody in here. So y'all watch the wire that Dwayne. The public just thinks that's a gamble now. This, uh, this proclamation is, uh, for Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Day. This, whereas the month of March was first recognized as developmental disabilities awareness by President Ronald Reagan in 1987 to bring awareness to the challenges people with developmental disabilities face. Whereas in 2010, Congress passed Rosa's Law, which changed the term mental retardation to intellectual developmental disability. And whereas intellectual disability starts any time before a child turns 18 and is characterized by differences with both intellectual function or intelligence and deficits in adaptive behaviors. And whereas developmental disability is a broader category of physical and mental conditions inclusive of ID which occur before age 22 and often presents lifelong challenges. And whereas Texas has more than half a million adults, children with developmental and intellectual disabilities. Whereas intellectual and developmental disabilities are identified as cerebral palsy, autism, spectrum disorder, Terrors syndrome, Down syndrome, fragile X syndrome, and Crater Willie syndrome. And whereas individuals with developmental disability should be treated with dignity, respect, and have the opportunity to realize their full potential in work, school, or at home. Now therefore, Liberty County Commissioners Court are helping to raise awareness and understanding of intellectual developmental disabilities and do hereby proclaim on March 24th, on that little March 24th, it's Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Day. But we'll celebrate this throughout the year. Thank y'all so much. And y'all, it's, it's up to me to, I have to give the names of some names, okay? So we're gonna make this really, please introduce yourselves. So.
Let's start.
My name is Travis LeBlanc.
Travis LeBlanc.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where you from, Travis?
Uh, originally from Lufkin, Texas, but in Colorado now. It's my kind of area of healthcare about nine years now.
Good to be here. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is, I'm original, we don't wear the different colors.
Yeah, but, okay. Yes, ma'am.
So Vicki Carrion, originally from California transplant and have been with Tri-County for two years.
Thank you.
And I have a daughter with CD.
Okay.
Yolanda Gude, and I'm also originally from Lufkin, Texas. I live in Montgomery County and I've been with Tri-County almost 10 years.
Thank you.
I'm Lady Dobbs. I'm original from Trinidad, Colorado. I'm also a transplant. I've been in Tri-County 14 years.
14 years. That's a pretty good record right there, isn't it? Yeah. Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Baker. From Cleveland, now I live here, I've been in Tri-County over 20 years, somewhere around there.
You know the record.
I'm lost count, so.
My name is Brittany. I'm originally from Texas. And then I've been in Tri-County for.
It's been a good minute.
It's been a good minute. You awesome.
Kathy Foster, Director of Provider Services. And I'm also a transplant from Pennsylvania. But I've been with Tri-County, it's going on 39 years.
Okay, you hold the record.
I took a long history point there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you too.
Chad, thank you. And I used to live in Port Arthur until my dad, so I moved in with my mom. And now I'm living in Liberty, with her.
Liberty. Congratulations. Glad to have you here. Thank you. And, uh, appreciate everything. Give us a little bit of, a little insight on what y'all are doing now. I know that Tri-County has a new facility in Cleveland, right?
It has not been built yet.
It's not been built, okay.
But that is the plan, to get that finished by the end of this year or beginning of next year.
Yeah, I knew we had a groundbreaking. I didn't know for how far along it was at this point. Yeah.
There were some problems.
Everything's a work in progress, believe me. It is. I appreciate your passion for everything. Thank you so much. It, uh, thank y'all for being here. And thank y'all for, y'all the folks that need the help the most. It, uh, without you, it'd be rough for everybody. Thank you so much.
By returning to bring the awareness.
Yes, ma'am. And y'all do. And y'all do every day. That's one of the things that we look at, you know, we, the county Commissioners can help in any, in any regard. So I know we just helped the other day with Tri-County. So, uh, just a small, but anything.
Anything helps.
Yeah, anything else, even the public can do that too.
Yes.
Alright. Anyway, that, uh, proclamation and, uh, I'm gonna get y'all to hold this together and I'm gonna get right, next to my liberty, babe.
Alright, you're good now.
Go ahead, you can add to this. I also was from Lufkin, but I graduated before they were born.
It happened, it happened. It's important right here. I was gonna get that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, James. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alrighty. Moving on down to, uh, number five, dirty public comment today. Anyone? Alright. Any conflicts of interest we need to declare by the court today? Anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, consent agenda. And I believe there's two add-ons. Dwayne, let's see. There's one from, uh, Possible Six, a lot of them transfer from capital outlay to training. And then there's a payroll item from unused vacation. I'll give you a play for Jackie. You have another one?
I have a budget that I want to set on this. Yeah, the one with the add-on, the pay.
Okay. Did we get them right then, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Did Kim have anything?
The add-on and the.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve with the additional add-ons. Sorry.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve with the additions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the public. Say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. There's Leon. There he is. Good morning, Leon. Can you hear us okay?
Jay? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry for the delay. We had a, we had some kind of glitch or something going on here at the house. No phone service. I couldn't get on the computer.
We got you now.
Okay, great, great.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't know if you had a treatment this morning and you're working.
Oh, we did that yesterday, brother.
Okay, okay.
So you want to vote on the contention?
Uh, do you want to vote on the consent agenda, Leon?
Have you started that?
Yes.
Okay, I've been through it. Just, did we get it approved?
Uh, yes, sir, but, uh, we'd appreciate your vote as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, I approve.
Alright. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Move on with the regular agenda. Eight one from Mr. Gott. Some information item presentation fiscal year, uh, 2023?
Two.
2022? Okay. Audited financial statements and single audit reports by Albert Garcia, CPA, amazing associates. Albert, you here?
I'm here.
Come on up here, bud. Let everybody get to meet you. We don't get to see CPAs very often.
Well, the security guard were questioning me coming through about taxes, so.
Imagine that this time of year.
Yeah, one, one thing I did mention to them that, um, it's, uh, some information out there that if you're used to getting the refund the last couple of years, but I'd say it's better to stay comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind, would you mind giving mine to Mr. Gott and I'll get it picked up?
Yeah. Can you send, uh, this to Dwayne?
Hey, I got, I got a couple of actions here.
Okay.
Uh, yes, this is for the fiscal year 2022. And, uh, I'll talk to Dwayne. We, we did, uh, we did have some personal issues that kind of delayed us this year. Uh, and, and a couple of other accounting type, type things. So, uh, we do apologize for the lateness of, of the audit. Uh, but I will kind of hit the, the meat of the report on pages three through five is our, our opinion. It's an unmodified report. And it's basically a clean report. Uh, that's what companies, counties would expect to have when you guys receive them. Um, on pages. Which is right page. On pages 20 and 21 is the county's balancing of the governmental funds. And the general fund is reporting a fund balance of just under $100 million. That is a healthy fund balance. And when you compare that to your operating expenditures, it's about six months of operating expenditures. That's a good fund balance. Um, you know, we've, we've kind of experienced, uh, with other clients, it may get down to about two months. That's kind of low.
Pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, pretty close. Uh, three months is, is ideal, but you, you guys are at six months, so that's, that's good. Uh, Roden Bridge Fund is, you know, just under 1.6 million. And that was a $90,000 increase. So another healthy fund balance there as well. Uh, Capital Projects Fund is reporting about 7.2, 7.3 million dollars. Um, and of course, a couple of years ago, there was a bonds issue for the general facility. So that's been decreasing ever, ever since then. Um, I think there was about $18 million in expenditures during the year. Uh, and still, hopefully, I believe it's completed in.
Getting around.
Yeah, getting around the completion. Uh, the debt service fund is about $500,000. And that's, um, activity in that is to pay for the debt. And it's restricted. Uh, now, one thing that the county has been receiving, uh, last couple of years is the American Rescue Funds. And I believe in '23, that's, that's when the, the fund started being an expense. So they just kind of been holding it for, for a little while. Um, on pages 24 and 25 is the activity for the governmental funds. And despite the general fund having a good fund balance, there was a slight decrease, but it's because we moved some money from the general fund to the capital projects. Well, uh, Roden Bridge, about $82,000 increase. Capital Projects Fund, although we spent about $18 million, the net decrease was about $13 million after that transfer. And then the debt service fund increased about $133,000. Now, last year, um, we did talk about the, the cities or the counties, uh, health insurance fund. Um, there was a, there was quite a bit of loss in that. And so it was funded during fiscal year '22. We had like reported, I'll get, I'll get to it. Uh, there was about an $82,000 deficit in that. Now it's down to about $3,000. So there were some, some additional funds to kind of like get that kind of to a regular point.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna kind of finish it up with page 61 and 62. This is the budget for the general fund. Now, for the, for that fiscal year, the county was anticipating a $6.5 million deficit. And it was more of a $950,000 deficit. So you had a positive variance of $5.5 million. So.
That was through savings throughout the year, correct?
Correct. Yeah, definitely. There was an increase in property tax collections. And then as far as the expenses, uh, it was, it was far less than what you anticipated.
Yeah.
You know, it's always good to be aggressive on expenditure and conservative on your revenues. And in this case, that's kind of how you, how you work.
Yeah.
I, I, we don't report any material weaknesses. And, uh, and again, uh, you know, you do apologize for the lateness of the report. Uh, we don't like to be this late. And so, uh, I know there's a little bit of, of challenges that we've experienced. And I know you all mentioned about Angela earlier too. So, yeah, she's, she's been a real trooper of yours.
She has.
Assisting us a long way.
Do the toughest people I know are, one's Angela, the other's Leon, putting, you know, what they've been through. So appreciate that.
Yeah. But that, that's my presentation. If you have any questions to be answered.
I do. Just one, I don't want to put you on the spot in that, in the CPA chair, but, uh, two different revenues, one, the Roden Bridge Fund, and one is the general fund.
Correct.
Can you kind of give the public a difference between the two?
Okay, so, so I ain't have Dwayne, I don't have.
Yeah.
So the, the vast majority of the revenues in, in general fund is for general operations of, of the county. Now, for Roden Bridge is specific for transportation. So there is a percentage of, of property tax that goes towards, you know, keeping up with the roads and, you know, y'all's, I guess, the Commissioners' budgets to keep that going.
Right. I just want, the public probably doesn't realize that, that there's a Roden Bridge Fund and there's a general fund.
Right.
Uh, the, the, the fun part is I get to, to deal with the general fund a whole lot. With Roden Bridge Fund, I, I probably just assume get shot at walking across the road because Commissioners, that's their money.
Correct.
And that's really what it amounts to. And, uh.
Correct. And there are some, the Commissioners, the Roden Bridge also gives fees and fines, you know, for the transportation. And that's where some of the revenue comes from.
Right. Yeah, that, uh, you know, looking at the big picture, the public also doesn't sometimes realize that we collect for every entity in the, in the county except for two. Probably Bevers ISP and Tarklin ISP are the two we don't collect for. And, uh, we just recently started collecting the date marks, please. So when you look at that and you see what monies are collected by the county, the county is not getting all of that, okay? It's cut up and sent out to the various taxing entities. So that has to be accounted for. And I appreciate the job that Dwayne and his group do. And, and Ricky Brown and his group. And, uh, and then, and Kim Harris and her group too. I mean, it, uh, and especially y'all on the autistic side. It, um, no, we don't get, what, 190 million a year or whatever the number is. It's, it's way up there. We get far below that to operate the county with.
Yeah, you, you can, you can view your, the, the county as a, as a pass through, you know, for collection and remittance of, or from the officials.
But it works well. Yeah. And I do know one thing. Dwayne and his group are tighter than an e-fiddle string. And if you know what that is, that little bead string on a fiddle. And if, if, if it ever pops, you're gonna know it ever pops. So I appreciate the job they do because they do keep everybody in line as to, uh, how close we're getting to the edge.
Yeah. Well, I, I will add, uh, you know, working with, working with Dwayne and his group has been great. Uh, in fact, uh, uh, staff is, you know, I can ask a question and they can, they can respond and provide feedback and, you know, tell me where things are, where things are and how to, kind of, that submission. So really appreciate, uh.
Besides that, but you know, also Harold with the purchasing side too.
Oh, that's.
You know, that's, yeah. He, he's been around for long enough where he knows where it all goes. Yeah. But thank y'all so much. I appreciate it. It looks like we've got a clean bill of health again. Okay. Thank you.
Well, always get a quick response from Dwayne too. Every time we ask him, he says no.
I think he went to the text doc school and no. Alright. That, uh, that's an information item only, uh, but we do have an item that we can accept as is stated. So anyone want to make the motion to accept as presented? Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, number eight two for Mr. Gott. Consider approve consulting services agreement and business associate agreement with Milliman Incorporated Consulting. These are actuarial services to be performed as required by governmental accounting standards, board statement number 75. Our financial statement reporting fees will be $11,500 for fiscal year 2023, $4,500 for fiscal year 2024, and $12,000 for fiscal year 2025. Dwayne, you want to add anything to that?
This is right last week. This is something the governmental county standards board has required us to do with this whole head. We split the county's speech of liability. There's some post-retirement, some challenges with this. So. We got something to do. I contacted a couple of people, got some good referrals and, uh, I could give feedback to people out there. A lot of people need those federal counties.
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Leon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight three for Mr. Douglas. Over in on the economic development transportation side of the world. Considering approve a contract amendment, IB to the base contract with Burns Architecture for changes to the Northwest Annex plans in the amount of $5,000. Can you see me, Leon?
Yeah, I see you, brother.
Okay, buddy. Alright. Good morning. Morning. We got an item here, you know, we have a project we've been working on for over a year. The Northeast Annex, which is gonna be constructed up in Santa Fe, uh, being commissioned with my ownership person. Actually, it's been on the books for three years now. Has it been three years? Yeah. I know it over a year, the plans, and we worked on the plans when I was still over engineering. Right. So, uh, we, uh, we got together with Billy Knox here about three weeks ago. And we have an opportunity, engineering permitting, need less space.
And we have an opportunity engineering permitting, needing less space than was originally programmed for them. Billy Knox needs more space than was originally programmed for him. So we can do a little pushing around, not change the footprint of the program, but just move some lines. Uh we're implementing down to a clerical area with three offices. Give Billy Knox a couple of additional offices, move some space around. Long story short, we need to amend Kenny Burns Architecture contract for an additional five thousand dollars. That will be the cost to revise the drawings that were done a year and a half ago.
Okay. Right.
So today, I'm asking you to approve a five thousand dollar amendment to the Kenny Burns Architectural Contract. So we can get these changes made, get with white construction, get a quote on this building, and get this thing started.
And this is coming out of the office funds?
Well, no.
No.
We got money for this, Dwayne?
Yeah.
We got, okay.
David?
Yes, sir.
Based on what you're telling us, it's a pretty ne- needed necessity, correct?
Uh yes, sir. It uh, it answers up to some needs that the sheriff's office had. And we can do it for relatively no increased cost on the construction of the project.
Just moving some walls, basically.
Oh, we're gonna just move it to some walls.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Dwayne, you are, you good with this, brother?
They said we have the money, but you know how he is, Leon, he's gonna, he gonna look at you like you spending more money, but that's, then we got it.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll make the motion we approve.
Okay. Motion from Leon, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries.
Let's see if we can get it out.
All right, we're ready to kick the football off. Uh from number eight-four from Mr. Brown, tax collector, considering approve overpay refunds in the following amounts of. One, first American Homes account number twenty-four, thirty-two, forty-nine for seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollar twenty-one cents. Number two, S W E Homes, account number eighteen, four oh nine for three thousand thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. And number three for David and Lisa Biltonman Junior, account number six-nine-eight-eight-one for four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. And twenty-three cents. Um I don't see Mr. Brown here today.
Make a motion to approve, second.
A motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-five from uh. Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty over the county attorney's office, consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County Precinct Four. And Jay Management. That does not have anything to do with me. Jay Management, just wanna make sure y'all know that. I'm not Jay Management. For the use of county roadways, including but not limited to deer trail road. Uh Leon, that's over in your neck of the woods.
Yeah, this is over here off fourteen thirteen. This is a uh, really not a road use agreement. What they're wanting to do is, is a road borer.
Okay.
And Catherine has uh written up an agreement with them that uh. The road wouldn't, you know, any prepared need to be that little small section of road or, or ditch. They will handle it. Not, then uh. We'll deal with it accordingly. But uh, they put that, we put it forth to them. They've signed and agreed to it. And now we're to bring this to the court.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve, David.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-six from Commissioner Karbowski and our friends over at Line Barker. Consider and approve resolution and order allowing Liberty County Sheriff's Office to conduct public resales. Of struck off tax exempt properties pursuant to tax code, Texas Tax Code, Section thirty-four point zero five. Uh from Line Barker, or here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if you would, come on up and give us some explanation, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The uh, basically three, four, or five of the tax code allows for two man, two ways to resell a property that was a tax sale. But did not sell on the courthouse steps. That is a private sale. Uh that is the mechanism, the tool that is used uh right now by the county. Uh what happens is that uh a, a interested individual. Will contact the tax office or one of the law firms and say, I am interested in lot one, lot one. Uh and I would like to put a bid in on that. Uh that bid is received by the tax office or one of the law firms. And that bid is forwarded to all the taxing entities in the county uh that tax that property. Uh and uh, and all entities must approve that bid. Uh we uh, we've done many of those as, as the other firms. Uh however, it is a uh, a very uh slow process. You have to wait for people to show interest. Uh as, as conversely, that is if you walk around the courthouse on a tax sale day. You see the large amount of people there wanting buy property. The tax code also allows under thirty-four oh five a public resale of property. And that is if this body chooses to uh execute a resolution authorizing uh. County to ask the sheriff's department to add that, those resale properties, properties that did not sell on the original. Uh at the original tax sale, add them to a separate tax sale, which would be public. On the courthouse steps, published in the newspaper, everything like that. And then you have the same amount of public interest. In those prop, those properties that you have for, that you have for regular tax sales.
Good.
Uh this is not, I don't look at this as being a replacement of, of, of private resales. I look at it as being enhancement. Uh you do not have to use a public resale. It is if that makes sense for a specific property. Uh and, and what we would envision, although obviously I, I work for y'all. So what we would envision is, is that we would uh pull up a, a number of, of property. That are right for this, this tool. Bring it to y'all, bring it to Mr. Brown, and say, hey, is this something that y'all think would be. Uh wise to put as a public resale. Uh and uh there could be mech, different mechanisms of doing that. Uh uh Cleveland ISD uses, utilizes this. Uh Tarklin ISD, uh all days ISD. Uh and uh, and uh, and basically, there's different mechanisms where, you know, we, I can come before y'all. Or there can be things in place that just make it happen, you know, automatically. If a certain property needs certain dice, you know, certain criteria. Uh the, the, the benefit is that you get the properties back on the tax roll. In the hands of a, of a taxpayer, owner that's paying taxes on it. Uh and you don't have to wait for someone to come and show an interest in the property. I will say right now, uh Barry Rober, I got the judge over here uh this morning, uh Barry's kind of. Uh has a great handle on, on these properties, as does everybody on my team. Uh there's roughly three hundred of these properties.
Good.
Now, not all these properties are, are properties people want to go forward on with this mechanism. But there may be some, a good number of them that we, we, we want to. Uh what we tried to do probably six months ago, I think maybe six, seven months ago. If we tried to drill a business, uh try to drill an interest, excuse me, for these properties. Uh we, we put ads in uh, in, in, in the newspapers. Uh both online and non-online. Uh and uh, and basically notifying that there are properties. That are held in trust by the taxing entity, the county. And uh if you're interested, please contact the tax office or, or the law firms. To, to uh inquire about how to acquire that property.
True.
Early on, we did a good response, as y'all have seen, uh from y'all's minister's work agenda. Uh but that response dwindled relatively fast. And so we just think this is another maybe option to get some of these properties back in the hands of tax paid citizens. Where y'all don't have to take care of them and uh, and, and the taxes are being paid. And, and hopefully, many of them might want to prove these.
Yeah, the, the question would be, uh, who is the lead in this regard? For a particular piece of property? Is, is it the county or the school district or a city?
It depends on, excuse me, uh it depends on who the property is struck off to.
Okay.
Uh what, what I'm talking about solely is the county.
Right.
And because these properties are struck off being, being, and, and I'm sure this is all very clear, but I want to be very clear.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to make it very clear to the public, because everyone's asking the question.
Yeah, yeah. It's, is that the, the, you go on the courthouse steps in a property, it goes for tax sale. And this is the first tax sale, the original tax sale. Uh and uh, and, and uh, you know, Dayton ISD is the entity that brought the lawsuit.
Right.
And so they set, they set that property for tax sale. No one bidders on that property. Uh and uh, and, and so it is, they asked that it be struck off, meaning sold. In trust to Dayton ISD on behalf of itself and the other taxing entities uh in debt tax that property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh this would talk, this procedure would, would deal with the, what happens when. We're down there and we ask to be struck off to Liberty County.
Good.
And, and so, and it's the same with each entity.
Right.
Each, each entity uh can have their property struck off to them, and they hold that property in trust. Uh and basically, they're kind of in the driver's seat of getting that property peacefully.
Thank you. But I hope the public took interest in that discussion, because that is something that comes up quite often.
Yes. But I will say, Judge, that, that anybody in the public, uh good, I know, I know. We, we work with the other law firms. Uh anybody in the public can, if they don't know who to contact.
Mm-hmm.
They can contact the tax office, which might be a good, very good clearinghouse to see who they're supposed to contact. But contact any law firms. If they contact our firm and, and it's a Dayton ISD. Struck off property, we, we'll refer them to the builder's firm.
Yeah.
So I mean, so, you know, we all try to work together because that goal is trying to get the, the tax.
Right. Common goal. That's it. Thank you.
And I did make the copies. I'm, I'm sure y'all want them, but just in case y'all to. Uh the, the enacting the thirty-four oh five's uh cut section.
Yeah, if you would, please.
And then a copy of the resolution. Proposed resolution.
Yeah, can we have any concerns about this?
Judge, uh, uh we need the resolution. It's good, my line marker. From the legal standpoint, this is all about the board, so it's also expected with board. And how do you feel about this?
Okay. Y'all have any questions?
No.
Good.
No, no. I would, I would add that these properties that come before us. We usually have one individual that is doing this bidding. This will give the opportunity for this same. Piece of property to be heard. By the public and several bidders on it. And I'm, I'm hoping will increase the value or the money that we receive from these strike off. Taxes. Problems.
And, and I do, not interrupt, but we, I do, I do expect that. Barry and I talked about that specifically. Barry, when we're getting ready for uh the tax sale, he has this, this individual and needs. Uh businesses that are interested in these sales. Uh and I think they're almost seventy-five to a hundred. In, entities and individuals.
About seventy-five people that are present, mainly Liberty County, it's a piece of real estate offices, top companies.
Good.
And, and then, and then uh it's been, I think anybody who do that, uh please, I'm, I'm sure you guys. Were down in Washington tax sale, it's kind of a little bit interested. It, 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 it's kind of amazing to me where uh property that might, might bring two thousand dollars in one, one situation, one procedure. If people bidding against each other, makes it ten thousand dollars. So.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, let's say the court.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you. I sure appreciate the discussion today. Number eight-seven is from Sheriff Raider. Consider and approve A-one Telecom to run cyber optic. In Liberty County Sheriff's Office to the radio tower at a cost of eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. A sixty percent down payment of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents is required to begin work. That's pretty self-explanatory, Sheriff. Let us know where we're sitting here.
We get, get the tower, we got the tower, we just need to get it up and going, so we gotta get the power over to it.
Right. Just out of curiosity, what's the timeline now? But this being done, what'll be the next?
Chief Knox left there, he was in charge. He, I think he said by the end of May.
Chief?
Chief, yes.
Where'd he go?
He's in the back corner, yeah.
I didn't tie it, right? Go ahead.
We're still looking at the end of April, but we'll basically may, I mean, so we just have the P O P sheet for the. The wiring, the electrical side of Dayton Electric, so we've got to get that put up. Uh it's just. Slow moving right now. It's kind of slow, it's five grand if we're going.
Right.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
From David, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank y'all. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Chief. Uh also, eight-eight from Sheriff Raider. Consider and approve the final payment to A-one Telecom, the amount of eight thousand. Nine hundred and thirty-four dollars for the V I O P upgrades at the Liberty County Sheriff's Office.
Since I don't know what V I O P is, I'm gonna turn it over to Nick.
Uh it's their phone upgrades. All their desk phones.
Their desktop upgrades?
And their phone service, that's, 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 that's my person.
Okay, we're not gonna be using toothcans and string, though, right?
Take a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David to approve. Second from Leon. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Number eight-nine uh from me. Consider approve the district attorney's office to have access to the editing tools. For the county website. This allows restricted access to their webpage only. On the county website for changes and upgrades to their webpage. And this is a, I'm not. I don't know how the district attorney's office works, so it uh, they requested this so they can make changes to their webpage. Only, not the rest of the county's page, but just there specifically. So um we said let's put it on the agenda and let the commissioners decide whether or not to grant this.
I would uh, I would like, before we vote on this, for them to uh. Give us some details of what kind of changes, what type of changes and what type of information would be placed on that uh, on that site.
Well, that's, that's just it. I don't know what they're, I don't.
I'd like, I'd like for, I'd like for them to provide some type of information, what changes.
Yeah.
And what type of information they will be placing on that website.
Well, this was placed on here for transparency purposes, and that uh, that's what I would ask.
Yeah.
Uh this court have anything else that they would like to add? It uh, would y'all like to have the uh, we table this and get one of the, uh not table, but at least. Uh step this off to a later portion of the agenda today and to get one of the DA's. Representatives up here to give us a description.
That's right, the two controls putting that stuff on the webpage.
Okay, yeah, Dee's gonna call them.
Jay's on them.
Yeah, we do. We control everything that goes on the website.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like, I'd like this put in, in writing for us so we can sit here and look at it.
Okay.
So I'd like to make the motion we table this until we receive. So I'd like to make the motion, we table this until we receive that information from them.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, you got a motion from Leon to table.
Say.
Got a second from David to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all the papers say aye.
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 Likewise nay.
Nay.
We have three ayes and one nay. So we will table this, and that tabling means it'll come out at the next court, okay? Now, about three months from now.
Right.
Yeah. That's okay, we're, we table it, we're gonna go ahead and let them get it in writing, but when they walk in, we're gonna explain that to them that we need it in writing, please. Okay, number ten, Mr. C, thank you, Harold, appreciate you passing everything out this morning. Consider approve master agreement to provide vending machines for all county locations. Lord knows, if we run out of Dr. Pepper's around here, somebody's in trouble.
Yeah, this is for you to consider if you want to do it or not, la- uh, last time I had one on here just for the new sheriff's office and the JP office, uh, period ending on a Dayton. And after I'd already put that on there, I thought it'd be better probably, because it's probably Dayton Annex, Cleveland, I could. Yeah, I'm not sure the annex had machines here, I'm not sure if they can still do some, instead of building one piecemeal, you don't want to see we do a master agreement, we can say for all locations, subject to your signature and approval. That costs the county anything, uh, this will be for one year. And I added a line to this one that wasn't in the other one, that said Liberty County reserves right to. Award a contract more than one vendor at our discretion, we want to pay someone else that comes in, but like I said, that costs us anything, we're allowed a master machine to give us a ten percent commission. That's it.
Make a motion to approve, say.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, eleven, from Mr. C, consider and approve extending contracts for all types of transports and pulprachremations. For an additional year from three fourteen twenty-four to three thirteen twenty-five, same terms and conditions apply. Uh, Harold?
Yeah, we had a contract with, uh, Deal, Deal Homes in Cleveland, Pace, Hansel, Cleveland, Dayton, Sterling, and Allison. Uh, had a one year and allowed for, I think, two additional one-year extensions. I talked to all of them, uh, they're all willing to extend the same terms, same amount, which is like seven ninety-five for a transport to Beaumont. I think eight fifty for cremations, uh, all of them said everything's working well, uh, the only comment I had is. Is, uh, sometimes when they're called, I guess by dispatch to come out, they have their people come in, get ready to go out, and then they call us, say, oh, never mind, we got someone else. They went to the next one, and there were little complaints about that, but that's more of a procedure thing than anything, it's not included in our contract. But if y'all are happy with the way things are working, go ahead and renew at least nine years.
Well, I believe we might have been left on the side of the road.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry, you got a motion from, I believe that approved, second Greg to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Harold, got one more before I get you, okay, uh, eight, twelve, consider approve payment to Myrmidale Construction, the amount of forty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollar twenty-nine cents for water mitigation services at the Dayton Annex. Does that mean our annex is about that much?
I think that part is pretty well done.
Okay.
Uh, I think they've done the majority of theirs a long time ago, uh, one of the first checks, I think we've got three checks from the insurance, one more from the bank. And the first check we got from them includes, uh, McDowell's invoice, this is what was approved by the insurance company, this amount.
Make a motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion from Bruce, Leon will give you a second on that to protect your neck of the woods over there. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Uh, also the DA's office, yeah, come on up. We, we tabled that item and, uh, I think for clarification reasons, and what's your name again, so everybody will know.
Anna.
Anna, please.
Anna, pull up a little.
A little bit more, so, you know, the world wants to know who you are, so that's why I asked you the name, okay? The, uh, I know you, but the world doesn't, okay? And the question was, uh, requesting. Restricted access to your webpage only, and I believe what the, the court's, I think, uh, question is, and, uh, what their desire to know is, what will you be doing with this as far as the DA's office? Because I don't know what y'all do, I'm, I'm don't, I'm not very involved in the DA's business, okay? But the thing is, I believe we want you to write down what you want to do this for.
Okay, and resubmit it.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, and we tabled it, that means it'll be on the next agenda, okay, but if you can, please, just write down what, uh, I guess, identify the restrictions or whatever, and what your plans are as far as what you would post on your portion of the website.
Sure.
Because our office, I know our office, you know, pretty much handles all the website stuff, but again, I'm not involved in your business, you know, it's, uh.
Do you want the specific changes or the just a general overview of what we're looking to do?
We won't, what, what we're asking for, Mr. Senator, is that you provide the information necessary, so we'll understand what you're going to do with it. That being, uh, what you would be using the site for, and what type of information will be applied to it.
Right, and you write that in writing, not, I can, second explain.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, yeah, please do it in writing, and then you can explain it too when you come back in in a couple of weeks, we'd love to hear from you, okay? All right.
What, what procedure, we're getting something put on the agenda now. I mean, on the website.
On the website?
Yeah, okay, website, website, or whatever, whatever.
Dee, what do we require there?
They just send it to our office.
Yes.
Send us an email.
And then y'all put it on there?
Yes, sir.
Um, in, in fairness, I do my own web stuff for elections for my office, but I post a tremendous amount of data by law. I think Bobby does his own website as well, so there are some, yeah, there are some, um, departments that handle their own website work, so it's not a, a groundbreaking thing.
Okay.
So, we, we, you know, I mean, if y'all had to handle everything, we post it, we drive in it, so.
Well, you do that anyway.
Your fifty-eleven was DA and handled our own website.
We, we start out by asking what all you're going to put on it first, so we will come have a general idea of the, how much information that it's going to be. We ask the same thing before we hand it over to them.
Yeah. Well, this is just our effort to stay more transparent, just so, but, okay, anyway, can you help us? Thank you. Number eight, thirteen, from Mr. Dennis over in I F E, come on up, Nick. Consider and approve the change of phone service to Dayton Annex, one-time fee of eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seven cents. Then it will be three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents a month, instead of the current eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. The county is currently paying, so we're going to have a reduction in the cost.
Yes, sir, we found it, uh, after the Dayton Annex issue, we, you know, we're rebuilding the network and everything, we looked into it, and, uh, we found a way to save some money, so we're gonna try to do that.
Way to go, Nick.
You have a whole dollar up, dude, you saved your money.
Make a motion to approve.
Most of David's second from Leon to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nay. You're the man, Nick.
That's right.
Number eight, fourteen, permits inspections from Miss Soliday, uh, consider and approve the privacy act request for FEMA files and information. Okay, well, Linda, you're gonna stay up here for a while, so.
I know, I'm kidding. Uh, I am currently working on the Liberty County substantial damage response, but I am a part of the efforts to get us in compliance with FEMA. And our original, uh, agreement has expired, so this is my request in getting a new agreement, so I can get the damage analysis and different information from them, so I can get the, the plans.
Okay.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes, your honor.
You good with this, you good with this, Catherine?
Yes, sir, I've reviewed, I've reviewed everything Melinda has sent it to me, we are ready to go.
I make motion to approve.
First from Leon, second from Greg to approve, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, fifteen, from Miss Soliday, consider approve amendment one of the American Rescue Plan Act from L J A Engineering. This plan is to correct an error with the administrative closure date, from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, to the correct date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, we had a one year, we just missed it.
Right, right, it was, I think it was just in a, a type, I typed out, and it was caught after the fact, so we just needed to clarify and get it fixed.
Take most where approved.
Okay, most from Leon, second from Greg, I think, was it Greg?
Robert Granton.
He was, yeah, I don't know, need more coffee soon. Most from Leon, second from Greg, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, sixteen, from Miss Soliday, consider approve L J A Engineering invoice, number two oh two four zero zero six five four, dated two five twenty-four, in the amount of, uh, two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for the Hull freshwater supply project. Invoice has been signed by a board member, and it'd be paid using ARPA funds, it's pretty self-explanatory, Melinda, is there anything else?
How we, how we come on the project, how are we?
This is the first one I've done for the Hull freshwater, um, but I can get the information for you.
Make a motion to approve, say.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, seventeen, from Miss Soliday, boy, we've got you for a while, don't we? Uh, consider approve the request from Grant Works for amendment number one, pertaining to the community development block grant mitigation program. G L O state contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash zero one four, E one seven one. This amendment pertains to the current administration billing structure, they would like to change to the progress billing using L C P T, L C P, excuse me, tracker software. And what this is, is the amount of completion of the project, it'd be billed accordingly.
Right.
And then pay that invoices that arrives, right? Okay.
Instead of waiting for the, the.
Oh, yeah, that, you'd be kind of holding them out there for a long time before they finally got a check.
Plan item, yes.
Yeah, and this pertains to the, uh, uh, the drainage study, drainage plan.
This is for the, yes, sir.
And we talked about this earlier too, so, you know, that's been coming, we kicked the football off a couple of weeks ago. So y'all know what I'm talking about, that's, we had a meeting in my office, we met with Grant Works and, uh, the G L O and with the county. And, uh, we discussed how we were going to get this project teed up and the football kicked, and it, uh, these are some of the things that we brought, that were brought forward, that's, you know, how we can do this fairly, all the entities that are involved. Uh, it's probably going to be a two-year process to get a study planned, but there is a potential for extension for one more year. Uh, we anticipate that is here or not, but regardless, it's, it's ongoing right now, because I believe a lot of our portion has started. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy to get that project up and running. So what say the court in this regard?
Make motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion from Leon, second from Bruce to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, eighteen, from Miss Soliday, consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County and H G A C. For the twenty twenty-four H G A C region, LIDAR study, Liberty County, funding for the study will be from the community development block grant. And if I'm not mistaken, Melinda, that was about a two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar cost.
Yes.
For the LIDAR study.
Yes.
And this will be paid out of the, uh, ARPA funds.
The ARPA funds, yeah. And the, uh, the scope of what was, uh, is behind this in the, uh, in the packet, so they can see everything that was to be included.
Right, and just for y'all that don't realize, this has been about a seven-year process to get to this point today.
It has.
But by the thing of the review.
Yeah, this is, uh, this really makes things start rocking, and it, uh, never been done in the county, I don't know why, it just never was done. We got to this point, let's, let's finish the project, so.
Motion to approve, Jay.
Thank you, Leon.
Second.
Second, motion from Leon, second from Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, nineteen, from Miss Soliday, consider approve the county judge's signature on the administrative contract and project startup forms, documents, forms, mitigation program. G L O state contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash zero one four dash E one seven one, and that just, somebody has to sign for this.
Right, well, you, John, you have already, uh, approved, uh, the judge as a signature, but just to be, uh, clear and open and upfront, I wanted everything, um, brought to y'all first.
Make a motion to approve, say.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay, is that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number eight, twenty, from Melinda, consider and approve the contract with L J A Engineering for professional engineering services. For the community development block grant mitigation program, G L O state contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash zero one four dash E one seven one.
I'm gonna have that number up for soon.
I should have had it, yeah, I sure should.
I, I am very fortunate today that I have representatives from L J A, if y'all have any questions on the contract.
Dr. John, y'all, make sure everybody's coming up and visiting with us a minute.
Yes, sir.
Because, uh, the world's gonna be seeing a whole lot more of you. If y'all show up in somebody's yard, I don't want somebody asking you, who are you and what, what you're doing here.
Yes.
Y'all would introduce yourselves, we all know Victoria pretty well, Dr. John, we.
I'm Victoria with L J A Engineering.
John Brown with L J A Engineering.
William Coblen with L J A Engineering.
We're glad to see you here today, we did have a, a, a nice meeting about two weeks ago in Moss. And it, uh.
So what would be, can you give me any kind of updates as this progresses or?
Yeah, our, our goal for the first, as, uh, Judge mentioned, the LIDAR being flown, um, LIDAR is probably about a year process, we should have got something by the end of this year, January, maybe at the latest. Um, we also are doing field survey work to do a lot of the front ends, um, updates to the topo, mine unitation, establishing benchmarks throughout the entire county. Those are probably about a year's worth of work through the field, re, re-level, re-establishment of a datum, so that we have good elevations for everything we manage against. Once we get that elevation information, then we can start the detailed model work. Um, so we have about a year before we do any detailed technical drainage modeling, but that year of establishing the data, the benchmark of elevations. Is going to provide a long-term effect for y'all to have good, good information, good elevations, good management, not only for the information that we're going to develop in terms of understanding the flood risk and the water surface elevations, but future developments to tie into to know how they compare to those elevations, one-on-one. So about a year's worth of field work, and then about a year's worth of modeling, and really start to understand all of the problems, nuances, potential improvements. That sort of stuff on the engineering, the, the drainage side, and then probably six months at the end, which is mapping, um, data tables, all of the kind of show itself stuff. Uh, exhibits along with, uh, based on the criteria manual, creation of a criteria manual, so the developments going forward has something to, to, to work against. Um, so about a two and a half year process, we think, um, and we do have plans for monthly updates with our invoicing, kind of a, a written kind of update, or nation with the team. We can, uh, definitely do quarterly updates. We can, uh, definitely do quarterly updates, uh, more based on face if you want or being teams and whatnot. Uh, but we have several state leader meetings, kind of on the books, some on the front end to help obtain information, data collection efforts, and then a couple towards the end where we present the findings and really give a sense of what we found, what we know. Um, and definitely interim coordination, communication throughout as needed.
Yeah. You know, the, one of the things we look at in this is even though the county has, uh, a zero impact regard for developments, and then, but in other words, what was there prior to a development arriving and upon its completion, there's a zero impact as far as drainage is considered. Our concern was gonna be what happens when you have contiguous developments, you know, and where does it go then? And, uh, and talking to folks in the county and old timers specifically, which I'd be considered an old timer at this point in my life, you know, well, I know where the water goes, you know, well, maybe you don't, and it, uh, we need a way to prove this up, and that's what this whole episode's been about. Is let's prove it up and say, no, it doesn't go there, and it, and if we're gonna clean this up and make it work, where do we start?
Yeah, our, our goal is, I'm sure y'all have made it there for a plan on roadways and corridors and things like that. Our goal is to establish something similar for the drainage aspects. If there's a drainage channel out there now, what does it serve, what can it take, what does it need to be size-wise for existing development, future development? What does a development do to not impact that system with its existing capacity above the future capacity? And what new channels, based on proximity spacing, would need to be in this area if there's just this virgin area of no, no drainage?
Uh huh.
Um, you know, we, we had a preliminary conversation on some pump detention and you know, that mean interim condition, but ultimately a channel getting there will test, will alleviate all needs for pumps because then you have gravity outfalls and things like that. So managing development between now and the end of this project, managing development from this, from the end of the project on kind of two levels of an interim and then an ultimate criteria. But as you said, taking an old timer's mentality of, I know a tennis ball in the river here, six hours later it shows up at this bridge to put it into a computer program that you now could say, I hit a button and I know exactly where the groundwater's gonna end up.
Yes.
Who it's gonna have to flow through and how big it needs to be, so that's our hope.
Will this be any research into existing drainage and easements?
Yes.
There of.
Yeah, there is a very specific line item that attracted the deals with research of easements, roadways, ownership, boundaries. Um, looking at the different cities and counties and, and the drainage systems out here and kind of how ownership and, um, and, and easement and roadway, there's a very definitive line item for that effort.
How many? It, uh, I had blonde hair when it started.
Yes, sir.
Are you good with the contract?
Yes, sir. Yes, I agree with it, I, I'm good with it, I think it hits all the major, major points.
Alright, I make motion we approve.
Second.
Motion from Leon to approve, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye. Likewise, nay, is that, thank you gentlemen. Thank y'all. Good to see y'all, appreciate it. Alrighty. Hey Lee, last but not least, you got, you got the books, okay?
This is, this is, um, one-sided. All the reports from the election, this is double-sided. But, um, everything's been posted, that website thing, uh, it's all been up there since we did it and the, uh, parties, I think, were, do their actual canvas. Thirsty, I believe, and I get them back this week, so, um, this is, uh, half that election is paid for in, in, uh, uh, by the county, so this is your acceptance of the official canvas, if you haven't seen it, you're welcome to look at it.
Okay.
There's a lot of data there, but I think everyone's, most everyone's seen the results by now. We had, by the way, um, I want to say it was just under twenty-three percent, uh, um, for this election, we had one thousand, eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-nine votes counted between, um, you know, provincial, early day of all of it, so not our biggest turnout, but, uh, our second biggest turnout, not best.
Not bad. Well, I'll say this on behalf of Commissioners Court, um, it, that's not a, it's not an easy job and sometimes it's an extremely thankless job. Y'all did a great job and all your group over in, uh, in your office and, and Ricky's, and as far as registrar's concerned. Uh, thank y'all.
We did a payroll, um, of about a hundred people and I think it cost, uh, about sixty thousand, now some of that will work it back, but
Yeah.
it was, you know, all those people and all those workers and it adds up, it's like moving an army and a bunch of equipment out and then getting it all back in one day, it's, uh, but thank you everyone for helping that did, the commissioners and everyone helped, y'all, we couldn't have done it without you, so.
We got the result, yeah, it's like James Tater too.
Make a motion to approve, say.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. I wonder why. Okay, pipe. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye. Likewise, nay, is that motion carries. Got a motion from Bruce to adjourn. Anybody wanna make a second?
I did, yes.
David made the second, call for vote, all favor. We are adjourned.